...City Council Meeting on May 7th. We have a forum that stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of the agenda. The agenda, approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and here in place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilman Liljegren, seconded by Councilmember Lundgren. Lundberg, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes, the special work session meeting of April 16th, 2018, and the regular meeting of April 16th, 2018.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Conofala, seconded by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. Approval of the bills, checks 98371 through 98483 totaling $499,639.35. What's the wish of the council?
I make motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mayor Zucca, seconded by Councilmember Goscheck. We'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. We'll have a presentation by General Cruz. We are ready, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm very excited to come and meet you again. And I was telling Sir Major Matt Erickson, who's my CSM at Camp Ripley, that when I was a young major, was the last time I came to this council and provided at that time the community brief for Colonel Weaver, who was off doing something. And so, my assistant here, Ashley, I asked her how old she was in 2007, I believe, or eight, when I gave that brief, and she told me 11. And so, I informed her that she just made me feel old. But it's a good thing. So, and tonight, I'd love to come and talk to you a little bit tonight, and we'll have a quick agenda here. Ashley, if you go to the next slide, please, let's see what we got. All right. So, you've seen this probably every time that Scott St. Sauber, Colonel Weaver, came before me. Our mission statement at Camp Ripley really continues to be the same. It's the three legs on the stool. It's our federal mission of providing the best soldiers I can to the federal government so that they can go and fight and defend our country. It's a state mission of being ready to train soldiers to help our state agency partners in domestic operations, to respond to things like the Super Bowl, or flooding in the Red River Valley, or flooding in Little Falls. And then, finally, I really enjoy doing the third part of my mission, which is to get out and be a good community member, and that's what the heart of tonight's all about. So, next slide, please. So, some of you probably aware of my background a little bit. My name is Lowell Cruz. I grew up in South Dakota, and I owned a dairy farm in South Dakota for about 17 years. And I had the opportunity to come and work full-time for the Minnesota National Guard in 2006, in two different roles on Camp Ripley. I was originally the security manager for the state, managing all the security guards, and then for the last five years, I was the director of logistics for the Minnesota National Guard. But this fall, we've had a serious amount of change in leadership in the Minnesota National Guard. So, I'll just kind of give you an overview of some of that. General Richard Nash retired this fall, and was replaced by Major General John Jensen, who was his deputy, and is just a great boss to work for. He was a former division commander as well, very level-headed, and more importantly, very much, very intelligent. I would call him a genius level of intelligence. Spent his life as a planner, and so he can sniff out a bad plan if you throw it in front of him in a heartbeat. And so, good boss. I talked a little bit about myself. So, what happened with me is the Minnesota National Guard has two one-star generals that work for John Jensen. They're brigadier generals, they're both assistant adjutant general positions. I fill one of those positions. But what the guard's done differently is we've stationed that position, which was normally in St. Paul, at Camp Ripley. And so, in that role, working as one of the assistants for Major General Jensen, I am titled the senior commander at Camp Ripley. Okay? Colonel St. Sauber, who retired this summer, and many of you came to his retirement, so I, he says hi, he's back in Britain at the lake right now, enjoying summer fishing and things like that, was replaced by a traditional guardsman, by Colonel Brian Melton. So, rather than having a full-time colonel there, which is what Scott was, Brian is a traditional guardsman. He is the county attorney over in Moorhead, for that county over there, in Clay County. And so, he comes as a normal drilling soldier and tries to keep my staff running, and already introduced by the CSM Matt Erickson, who joined us last March. So, he's already got a year under the belt of a three-year tour, and he joins us as well from the Fargo-Moorhead area. So, next slide, please. So, just quick, the numbers you've seen multiple years, and if you look all the way back to 2012 through 16, we hover around that $300 million of economic impact in your community. That hasn't changed a lot. It really is tied to two different things. When it does fluctuate, it's how much construction we're doing on the base, or how much money we were able to get to continue to buy willing landowner easements as part of the A-Cub program, or the Army compatible use buffer program. This last year, we were very lucky of leveraging end-of-the-year federal funding of about $9 million. And so, that really helped that impact line there. So, but our military payroll, our payroll across the base remains around that $64 million. And I don't see any real significant growth in our full-time team at Ripley. We're fighting the DOD for more full-time force to help the National Guard now that we're essentially bearing the brunt of being an operational part of the Army. And that'll come, but like all things, it takes five, six years for the federal government's budgeting process to catch up to that emerging need. So, we're probably still a couple of years away from seeing any kind of growth in our full-time force. Next slide. So, some of the accomplishments, we had about almost 400,000 man-days of soldiers, DOD members at Camp Ripley this last year. But what's really important to highlight is almost 62,000 man-days of civilian agency training there. So, that's really been our growth market. General Nash tasked Colonel St. Sauber with growing that aspect, and what was normally a kind of a April-through-October footprint of soldiers coming to Little Falls and to Camp Ripley is now a year-around footprint of police departments and DOT snowplow drivers and all sorts of different agencies coming and using what is our very economical training facilities there for them to rent from us. So, I did participate. I was the commander in the exercise that we did in August for the combat support training exercise. It's a really cool exercise that the Army Reserve does, and what's really important about that is the exercise has about 5,000 soldiers at Fort McCoy in Wisconsin, and we had about 1,500 at Camp Ripley. And for those logistics units that were part of that, they really trained on the distance between the two installations. They had a convoy support center in the Twin Cities area, and they literally moved convoys back and forth from Fort McCoy to Camp Ripley every day, and tracked them and moved supplies back and forth. So, done a lot of wildland fire training. We were tracking, we've been briefing it a couple of years. The 60-acre solar field came online last April after the tornado tried to delay it. And then, we've hosted all sorts of different events and dignitaries throughout the year. So, pretty busy year in 2017, and 18 is just as busy for us. So, next slide, please. So, the tornado hit in the fall of 16. It wrecked about seven buildings for us. Right now, the four major buildings that we are reconstructing are coming out of the ground at Ripley right now. So, if you come, you'll see this construction occurring. What's really cool about it is we were able to leverage almost $30 million of leftover federal funding at the national level to replace these facilities. And so, the tornado basically expanded the capability that we had in those buildings, because now we're building those buildings to a different standard than what they were in the '70s when they were originally built. And so, they're much larger, and they're going to give us a lot more capability. And so, you know, if I could get a tornado to roam through about every three years and direct its path, I think it'd probably be a good thing. But we're very happy that nobody got injured in that, and by next summer, these buildings will all be complete. So, it just shows you how long it takes for us to contract and construct anything as well. Next slide. We are doing some additional new construction that, so you're very familiar with our row-upon-row tin huts. And if you're interested in buying a tin hut, we just put the first batch of them on the state surplus website today. So, I was told back in the '70s, we populated the countryside with tin huts for the last time, and so we're going to try that again. The reason why we're selling some is we had to move some, because we built these buildings in a replacement for them. And so, each one of these buildings is about a little over $1 million to build, and it gives us five open bays inside of that building, the same capacity as the tin huts that were in that spot. So, what's, well, really, we're calling them three-season, but I'm really pushing the envelope to try to make them usable for us from probably March through November. And so, they'll be able to take the winter off, but really, we're so busy right now that most weekends, I can fill the place up and not have enough housing. So, if we can extend that season, we hope that we can, you know, move some of that demand around as well. Next slide, please. Other things we did in the community for construction projects, many of you have been to Vahalla. We overhauled the exterior of Vahalla this last year, new shingles, resealed all the logs on the side, so just to try to maintain that building in the historic state it's at. We're really, right now, delving into the history of how it was created, and it really appears that, you know, back in the '30s, there was some interesting accounting processes that helped us buy Vahalla and get it there, done by the governor at that time. So, we did demolish some of our World War II-era buildings. There's only four World War II-era buildings left on the installation. We took down four of the two-story barracks. And we're, right now, that area is cleared, and the buildings are gone, and we'll figure out what's going to go in there in the future. Next slide, please. So, just a quick overview of the training schedule. May is the month we're in right now, and I like to highlight the elements that are going to make a lot of noise per month, or kind of make a lot of helicopter flying and stuff like that. But I would tell you that we have noisemakers, May through August or September, coming up here. May's a very busy month for us. We've got about 12,000 military soldiers that are going to come join us over the month of May. This last weekend, I think most of them were at Camp Ripley, because it was incredibly busy. But we will see some artillery firing starting later in the month here, as well as we'll continue to see a lot of airfield usage by both our helicopters and our C-130 flights. Just a highlight of major events, we had the Disabled American Veterans Turkey Hunt last week, and so we had 31 disabled American veterans from the VA come and hunt. They shot 14 turkeys. And so, that was pretty good success for them. Normally, they're not that successful. Bud Grant was up again with Bob Lassard, so they were kind of our two dignitaries that were hunting again. This was probably the first year that Bud asked the group if there were any World War II veterans present, and he was the only one there. And so, that generation is about ready to be recognized as not joining us for a lot of events. So, today, we are doing the deployed turkey, or the deployed soldier turkey hunt on base. So, we got about 30 soldiers that have deployed in the last five years or so that are out there actively trying to shoot a turkey right now. Next slide, please. So, another laundry list of units in June, not as busy as a lot of Junes I've seen, about 8,000 soldiers over the month of June. But June is going to be very busy for us, and you'll see some invites from us as well, because the Norwegians are coming for our summer Norwegian exchange in June. This will be the second summer we've done this. It'll occur the 14th through the 30th, basically, of June, and we'll once again kind of rebuild those bonds that we have with our Norwegian brethren, as they bring 100 soldiers over here, and we send 100 to Norway. So, but we do have, we do have units coming from Illinois as well, and Wisconsin and Iowa this month, as well as a plethora of Minnesota units. Next slide. With the Fourth of July being midweek this week, or in July, and kind of consuming the first 10 days of July, in reality, we, you know, you see our training on our soldier side is about 6,000, so our lightest month this year. We do see some extra helicopters coming in in July, though, so there'll be some extra helicopter noise, as well as the 151 field artillery is going to have its annual training in July. So, you'll have a lot of artillery occurring the last two weeks of the month of July. For major events for us, we're hosting our youth and our teen camps in July. These are camps that are designed for our military children, and we do, we probably have 200 to 300 teen and youth campers that come for a week at a time to Ripley and get a chance to learn what their parents do when they're in uniform. So, it's kind of an exciting event for us. So, next slide, please. August is probably our biggest month of the summer. Full month of August, almost 10,000 soldiers there. And once again, you'll see the 125 field artillery is there for its annual training, so that's the sister battalion. So, we have two 151 battalions in the state, or two 155-millimeter battalions, and they're probably our largest noise producers, as well as our armor battalions. But our FA battalions obviously make the most noise. The Minnesota State Patrol's got their camp going, as well as the DNR has their academy going this summer as well. So, next slide. Finally, we roll into September and October, and you can see the column on the right just grows exponentially for us. October and September and October are really the months that our civilian agencies are trying to leverage Camp Ripley to do a lot of their conferences. And so, our military traffic's about 5,000, and we're almost, you know, half of that in the civilian column. So, a lot of police departments and sheriff's departments and emergency management training occurring in September. And next slide, please. And almost equal number of civilians coming in October. But the largest portion of that civilian population in October is the DOT snowplow driver training that occurs in, for two one-week periods. They take up a lot of our room, as well as all, we count all the civilians that are participating in our deer hunt programs as well in October. So, next slide, please. I threw this slide on here, because I wanted to deliberately engage you and ask for your help on our C-130s and what they do over Camp Ripley. You know, there are two C-130 wings in the state. The 934th is a reserve wing, and the 133rd is an Air National Guard wing, both stationed in St. Paul, or at the Minneapolis Airport. But both of them will spend normally Tuesday through Thursday, sometimes Monday through Friday, doing day and night flying at Camp Ripley. And so, for, and we get a lot of, well, not a lot, but we get complaints from the public of what the C-130s are doing, and they're flying too low, or all sorts of other bizarre complaints. And so, this is my ask for you to help engage a little bit, because the public is used to seeing an airplane take off, fly, and land at a position. So, to see airplanes swirling over Camp Ripley, our C-130s are coming to Camp Ripley because of two things. We have a beautiful runway, and we have what we call an assault strip, which is a gravel runway. And so, we have C-130s that come from Texas, Arizona, California, to use that gravel runway, because it's one of the few in the nation, and they train on it to land in Afghanistan. And so, you'll constantly see the swirl of four-engine airplanes swirling around Camp Ripley, and they'll be doing touch-and-grows on those runways, as well as they continue to drop pallets of mock supplies in our drop zone that are GPS-guided. So, they have the ability of controlling through GPS the parachute that's bringing that pallet down, so it can land on a spot in the ground, which is incredibly important for us in Afghanistan, again, as we resupply troops that are isolated. So, that's kind of an overview of what they do with flight training, both day and night. At night, they're flying without any lights on, and they're flying with MVGs. And then, we have a lot of their dismount folks that come to Camp Ripley to train as well, both their medical and their security teams. Next slide, please. Talked a little bit about our, we've got four main, we've got four main partners on Camp Ripley on the state agency side that are full-time tenants. The DNR right now is doing their academy. We've got about 15 to 18 potential conservation officers training in their academy right now. The State Patrol graduated their academy last week out of Ripley, so those kids have been at Ripley for almost five months. And the HSEM and MNDOT have a permanent presence at Camp Ripley as well. And so, not only are they renting space from us, but they're part of our emergency management plan and provide us the response that we need with the Morrison County Sheriff for any kind of active shooter events and things like that as well that could occur in our installation. Next slide. Our environmental program, it seems like every year, I can brag about the fact that we won another award. This year, we've been recognized that we won the Department of Defense Cultural Resources Protection Award. Now, it says Army in there, but when we built this slide, we'd won the Army level, but now we've won the DOD level. And so, we're being recognized for our efforts to preserve the Indian mound sites that are along the Mississippi, which are burial sites from, you know, Indian tribes from long ago, as well as some of the preservation of Old Four Ripley, and then all the work that we're doing to culturally clear our land and work with the tribes to make sure that we don't have any kind of culturally significant land or articles in that land that we're going to disturb. And so, this year, it was a cultural resources award. Before, it was a natural resource conservation award. But they've got a lot of responsibilities, and we tie to that, you know, our efforts at green energy as well, the solar field. And what I think is more effective is all the geothermal that we take advantage of. All the new buildings that we're reconstructing from the tornado damage are all going to be heated and cooled by geothermal energy. So, Camp Ripley's done a ton of that kind of work, and it's kind of exciting. Next slide, please. With all these environmental programs, I've got a lot of environmental oversight as well, what I call drivers of regulation. So, we've got, we've got to be compliant with federal and state statutes, both the EPA and the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the DNR. I've got presidential and governmental orders. I've got stacks of Army regulations, just a lot of checks and balances in our environmental program, and a lot of agencies that come and inspect us as a whole. And I would tell you that we don't win all those awards on the last slide without meeting all the expectations of those agencies. So, I'm very proud of how the job we do as environmental stewards at Ripley. Next slide, please. And then, finally, we couldn't do the environmental work we do without all the agency partners that support us, the soil, the Minnesota Board, Water and Soil Resources, the colleges, your local schools, interest groups, Earth Day, you know, all those opportunities to do something for our environment is part of what documents and gets us this chance to compete for that high level of awards as well. Next slide. So, some of the things that we're doing for community outreach, we host our annual open house again in September, so please, if you're available that weekend in September, come join us and see what's changed at Camp Ripley. We do a lot of festivals in Morrison County. I provide a lot of senior leaders for Memorial Day and Labor and Veterans Day speeches, because we're proud to do that, as our, you know, carrying our part of the water for those generations that've come before us. As well as our outdoor sports programs with our, with the VA is pretty important for us. Next slide. We're almost done burning. This year was a strange year for us. We were going to burn 15,000 acres, and we're almost there. I'd say about half of it burned non-deliberately, you know, because our soldiers continue to train, so the majority of our impact areas burned through training burns, but they were all well-contained. And I would tell you that having my full-time fire department at Camp Ripley has not only professionalized our footprint at Camp Ripley, but as part of your community, my fire department is, you know, an active member in every one of those local fire departments. There's somebody that's working full-time at Camp Ripley. So, to have the opportunity to have a full-time firefighter just leads to a different level of professionalism for those kids, and a lot more training. And so, we're almost done burning. The conditions the last couple of weeks have been really good for burning, so we've had to be very careful. So, next slide. And then, finally, I talked about it a little bit earlier, this last year, we leveraged $9 million of federal funds to buy A-Cub easements. We also were able to get money out of the, from the Lassard Heritage Council, which allowed us to get almost another one, you know, $1.2 million there. And so, we were able to enroll another 2,500 acres into easements. But I've got 211 interested landowners out there that are waiting for me to find more money this year to help them. And, you know, what's different about our A-Cub map, you've seen it before, but this year, we modeled it due to noise contours. So, before, it was a three-mile buffer around Camp Ripley, and that's kind of what you see there right now. But the zone available for A-Cub's going to change a little bit, and we're modeling it after our noise contours so that we can help get easements on land that's most affected by our noise, because that's probably our biggest challenge. So, next slide. And then, just kind of an overview of another construction piece that I thought was significant, just to share with you. It kind of cropped out of the ground without us. Our FMR construction folks knew it was coming, but the management on base was surprised a little bit the day they told us, hey, let's go site this. But we dug this very large basin on the north end of Camp Ripley. It's close to the old cemetery that's on the north end of Ripley. And what it does is we've got a lot of acres of parking lots that have storm sewers in them, and all that water was running into the Mississippi, and all the gravel and all that that came off those parking lots. And so, this infiltration basin is designed to take all that runoff and contain it and allow it to soak back into the aquifer. And then, hopefully, as well, we'll come every couple of years and harvest all the dirt and gravel back out of it to maintain it, and allow us then not to dump all that back in the Mississippi. So, another example of something that we'll probably tout as an environmental process that's doing us a lot of good. So, next slide, please. And lady, gentlemen, that's the end of my quick overview. I'll take any questions that you have for me.
I could say some good things about the working relationship with you guys. Camp Ripley, Veterans State Trail, it's been really nice, and they're really open, and I'm not really going to say much about that, but it's been a good working relationship. And I've taken students in there for environmental studies and never had a problem. You guys have always helped out. The kids enjoyed it, they learned a lot, and it's a really good spot for that. So, you benefit the community in other ways that people just don't see every day, and it's really, it gives us a lot of beneficial education and availability to go out there and to see things we normally wouldn't. So, it's, I like the way you handled that.
Sir, you know, and I've talked to you offline, you know, part of that is the leadership change of our adjutant general. General Jensen is much more understanding of our role in the community, and sometimes that role has a little risk, be it maybe giving up a little ground on the side for the Veterans Trail, or whatever it is. But he understands risk and understands when it's appropriate to make a decision and assume some risk. So, you know, he's a good guy to work for, so.
Do you have the date for the teen camp, when it is?
The first one is, I got to get my son enrolled. It is the last week of July is the first one here, so. And that enrollment's open, so if you have somebody that you want to steer at that, please have them go on the website.
I was out there last year with the grandson, and he's ready to go again, so.
Oh, good.
It's really fun.
Maybe you can camp with Connor.
General, I'd like to thank you for the infusion into the local economy. Looking at those numbers, and while I was employed at Coburn's, just to see... looking at those numbers, and while I was employed at Coburn's, uh, just to see, there was soldiers in there almost daily, especially from the May through October, but pretty much year-round, and also the Citizens Advisory Committee and actually taking input from citizens around the area. Um, and the great working relationship that Little Falls, as with Camp Ripley, I think we're very fortunate. We've had great leaders out there, and I see they're continuing with the lead, great leaders out there. So, thanks for everything you do, and looking forward to working, uh, more with Camp Ripley.
Well, Mayor, I appreciate your comments, 'cause we understand that we can be the kinda neighbor that causes problems, or we can kinda be the neighbor that gets ahead of problems. And, and at the heart of that, that's relationships. So, that's why I'm here tonight. And so, I'm very proud to have a chance to talk about a place that I love. So, it's very easy to talk about Camp Ripley.
Well, I get to hear the C-130s and the helicopters in my neighborhood, and I like the, uh, when somebody said something to, I believe it was Russ Nygren about the noise. He said, "Sounds like freedom to me," so that's what it sounds like to me.
All right.
Thank you for coming to share with us.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Airport Commission minutes, April 2018, receive. Animal control report, April 2018, receive. Building report, March 2018, receive. Economic Development Authority minutes, April 2018, receive. Fire department report, April 2018, receive. Hire summer employees, golf, and Parks and Street, approve. Letter of support to the, for the City of Pillager Innovative Funding Grant Application, approve. Medallion Hunt, Dam Festival, Mid-Minnesota Federal Credit Union, approve. Outdoor event, West Side Bar, June 2nd, 2018, approve. Parade permit, special events application, Our Lady of Lords, approve. Recycling report, January 2018, receive. Returning seasonal golf employees, approve. Rural Fire Grant Project Gloves, Fire Department authorized. Sidewalk Art Contest, Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau and Great River Art, consider. Sidewalk Promotion, The Flower Shop, approve. Temporary on-sale liquor license and roadway closing permit, St. Mary's Church, one-hundred-and-fifty-year celebration, approve. Temporary roadway, roadway closing permit, Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, June 1st, 2018, approve. Tobacco license, pure exhale, approve. Waste Water Treatment Facility amended report, March 2018, receive. Water Treatment Facility Report, April 2018, receive. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the items from the consent agenda.
Councilmember Hanson moved, seconded by Councilmember Knopfler.
Liljgren.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Publics hearing, public hearings and lettings, we have none. So, move on to old business. Amend motion of April 2, 2018, for generator, Total Energy Systems.
Yes, at our April 2nd meeting, I had requested the council approve the purchase of a new generator for our, our lift stations at the, the waste plant. Um, at the time, when I had spoke with the staff down there, I got the voltages for the, the lift stations. Um, I was under the impression that two-hundred, the two-hundred-and-forty volt that they had indicated to me was a single-phase as opposed to three-phase, um, because that's kind of a unique, um, setup where we've got both 208 three-phase and 240 three-phase. They have to make a special switch so that the particular generator can work on all of our seventeen lift stations. Um, that comes in the amount of about twenty-one-hundred dollars, uh, addition to the, to the generator, but I felt it was needed so that we would make sure that that particular generator would work with all of our lift stations. So, tonight, I'm asking the council to amend the motion from April 2nd, uh, to have the updated contract of thirty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and eighty cents, uh, from, um, Total Energy Systems out of Eden Prairie, and that would be charged to the Waste Water Improvement Fund. That is still within our budgeted amount, uh, but it is a different price amount.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Knopfler, seconded by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion?
What are, what are we doing now?
Right now, we don't have any port. Well, we've got one portal generator at the water plant, uh, but that would be for all of the lift stations.
Okay.
We've got a total of seventeen. Um, that one is very large, so in order to make that run, we would have to get one of the one tons out of the street department. So, we've gotta have a number of departments working together in order to make that work.
And then within the seventeen lift stations, what are we looking at roughly for dispersment, the, uh, two-forty versus two-oh-eight?
Three of them are, um, the two-oh-eight volt. The other ones are two-hundred-and-forty volt.
What do we, what's approximate cost on switching, making them all the same and running one generator?
I can, I can check. I suspect it's gonna be more than two, twenty-one-hundred.
You got a gut feeling?
Knowing how, how electrical companies run, um, you'll have to run the line the entire stretch, so it's probably gonna be tens of thousands. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other? We have a first and a second. Uh, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
New business, Agreement with Bethel Lutheran Church for an election polling place, Ward Three.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, upon input from the, uh, Little Falls School District that they would request that we not utilize Lincoln Elementary for their, our polling place for Ward Three, um, we went out and inquired to, uh, to facilities on the, in that ward, within that ward, that we felt would be, uh, adequate for hosting an election. Uh, and we had one response back that was willing to work with us in, in that discussion, that was Bethel Lutheran Church. Um, so, before you is, uh, an agreement to, to establish that, um, working relationship. Um, they really are providing us some pretty good opportunities, uh, giving us access before, the day before and the day after, um, as well as the, on Election Day, um, to utilize their facility. I think it, it's, has all the, you know, handicap accessibility requirements that we would, we would want, um, uh, in a site like this, as, as well as other meetings, meeting places and storage that we could keep some equipment if we had to keep it on-site. Typically, we're gonna be spending the entire day of an election day, um, mostly for that general election. Um, we would have very little, or we wouldn't have too much needs before and after, but it's nice to have that flexibility. There were one kind of request that they had, and we, and this is consistent with what we provide at Initiative Foundation, um, for hosting that as a polling place, is that we do provide them a stipend for, for cleaning services, and their, their request is for, uh, twelve-hundred dollars every, uh, four years, uh, for that cleaning service. So, I felt they've been, they've been really adequate to work with for us. I'm really appreciative of their opportunity to, to step up and, and provide this alternate location, uh, since the school district felt that, um, utilizing that as polling place didn't align with the safety requirements that they're establishing in their facilities. So, um, I think this will be a, a good, good alternative for us.
Question for John. Now, you may not know this, um, but do you know what the school will do if they have referendum, because they always use that for referendum? Are they gonna have to find an alter, alternative place, or is it gonna be okay?
Um, yeah, that's, that's a good question. I, I do not know the answer for.
Okay.
Um, their, their indication is that for their regular elections, um, that it's for school board members, they're going to be in line with our polling locations, um, because it would be all on the same ballot, so that they would, they would be utilizing the same facilities as, as we are. Um, for those general, regular elections that we have the same ballots. Um, if they have a special election for, for a school board member or referendum, they're really on their own to, to establishing those locations.
So, do they pay part of the cleanup, then, or is that our responsibility to provide the polling place?
It is our, it is, it is our duty to, to provide the polling place, and it is the opportunity of the school district to align with our, our polling places for general elections. Um, for their special elections, they, they, it, it's our responsibility for them.
I have a question too, John.
Sure.
Um, they want twelve-hundred dollars every four years, but then down below, um, the renewal is in three-year increments.
Mm-hmm.
So, why is one four-years and the other three-years? They don't...
Um, in a, in that discussion, that, that did evolve, um, to four years being the, probably the market rate for, it's, it essentially would cover the carpet cleaning, cleaning carpets in the facility. Um, I'm not certain why, that, it would be anticipated that we would continue if this relationship passed the three years, if it, if it does work.
Mm-hmm.
If not, um, I mean, it's not...
If we're paying them for four years, but we're only using it for three...
I mean, they're getting a hundred dollars extra if they, if we only keep it for, for three, or getting that extra, I guess, three hundred dollars for, for extra cleaning.
So, it seems like a little bit of a disconnect there.
I'm, I'm not worried about it. I mean, twelve-hundred dollars for four years, if that's the rate, and then a three-year renewal. I mean, he mentioned carpet cleaning. You got people using their water, their sewer, toilet paper.
Wearing tear on carpet.
Yeah.
That's big, 'cause it's a lot of people going in.
I think it's a great location for the Ward Three, too.
They have a large parking lot.
Right off the highway.
We need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Liljgren, seconded by Councilmember Goschek. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2018 dash 27, Establish Wards and Polling Places.
Again, this just falls in line with our previous agreement that, um, that we can have, host, use, utilize the Bethel Lutheran Church as their, as their polling place. Um, however, we do also have to establish that by resolution, so it's just formally, um, doing so with the other, uh, polling places, um, or based on the, the definition of those wards, so...
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundren, Lundberg, sorry, seconded by Councilmember Knopfler. Sorry, recall, I'll get it straight.
It's all right.
It's a resolution, so we have to do a roll call, correct?
Correct. Um, Hercock?
Yes.
I'm in the wrong order. Goschek?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries?
Elections Emergency Plan Information, Morrison County. John?
Again, another, um, requirement that we have on hosting elections, identifying who will be the, the administrators. Um, we have a unique cir, circumstances here where our, typically, our election administrator is Wendy Zilka, our, our city clerk, um, who is the spouse of our mayor, Greg Zilka, if you weren't aware. You are now. Um, but in years that Greg would in, in, uh, indicate that he is running, uh, we utilize Lori Casella as our Assistant Election Administrator. Um, so this just identifies the, those official locations and, um, and persons that are, that are to be contacted.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Goschek, seconded by Councilmember Lundberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Accept Recommendation of Airport Commission. Request for Qualifications TKDA Airport Zoning. Greg?
Yeah, um, staff solicited quotation, or, um, proposals from TKDA as well as Catermously and Jackson for airport zoning. Uh, as you may recall, we're looking at doing the crosswind runway, uh, at the airport. And so, as part of that, we need to rezone the area both north and south of the approaches, uh, for the new runway. Uh, as you can see on the scoring, they're both very close in terms of, uh, scores. Both myself and Amy Kowalski from Morrison County reviewed the proposals, and we both felt that TKDA out of St. Paul would be best for the city of Little Falls. So, tonight, we are asking the council to accept, accept the recommendation from the Airport Commission and approve TKDA, uh, on updating the zoning for Little Falls Morrison County Airport.
What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Knopfler, seconded by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Is part of their scoring, their price?
No, it's strictly qualification-based. So, airport, uh, engineering and zoning is a little unique, where, uh, you do a qualifications base, see which one is better suited for the project that you currently have at hand. Then you do a, basically, peer review, a third-party independent, uh, engineer will, will rank their, uh, their fee. So, the, the consultant will give you a fee of X amount of dollars. You go to the, the third-party review and see what their, uh, price would be. If they're plus or minus ten percent, that's what the FAA allows. If not, then they need to readjust their, uh, their qual, or their scope to, to align within that mark. So, the pricing will be coming forth probably in the next month or so, um, but that does not include any, any pricing in it. It's strictly qualifications.
Any other questions? We will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Out-of-state travel, John Radermacher, ICMA Conference.
Thank you. Uh, again, this year, um, I was re-elected to be, sit as a ex officio on the NJPA Board. As part of their, um, budget for board members, they allow for, um, reimbursement of up to fifteen hundred dollars for board members, even ex officios, to attend an out-of-state conference. Um, the ICMA Conference aligns with their, uh, conference, uh, schedule that they attend and have, uh, booth set, so it's a good, um, match in, uh, in, in terms of my attendance, because it fits really well in my professional, uh, professional line of work, and, and it fits with them in terms of, uh, their presence there. So, it's a really good opportunity and relationship, and, um, we have a requirement to request, um, permission from the council, uh, for attendance to any out-of-state conferences. I've looked at the, the prices with, typically with the registration costs, um, cost of flights, where they're at right now, which is very good, um, and the, um, the potential for lodging. Um, I would, again, be sharing a room with, uh, either a, a member from Minnesota, or my family would be attending with me. Um, we, they've expressed that as an interest. Um, that being the case, I would reimburse half the cost of the room so that the city or, and neither the city or NJPA would be, um, you know, paying for a, a full room, especially if my family was attending, or I was sharing that with, with somebody else. So, so with that, with the lodging, flights, and red, conference registration, I would see the cost being, um, under that. Most of the meals during the day are provided. Um, evening meals, we have, uh, generally, a state conference, uh, a state association, um, meal that, that's typically provided by the individual, or paid for by the individuals, um, because there's, you know, generally alcohol included in that. But, uh, so, really, I, I, I don't envision this exceeding based on, on the budget. If it were to, um, it did exceed slightly last year. I believe it was like less than a hundred dollars that I exceeded last year when I attended in San Antonio. Um, it still fits within our, our budget, the budget that we established within the, um, for administration.
I'd make a motion, Tabaroff.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, seconded by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance Number Nine, Seventh Series, Authorize and Direct Sale of Property, Spectrum Holdings LLC. Lori?
Um, currently, Spectrum Holdings has a lease agreement with the city of Little Falls through the EDA. They lease their facility over in the West Side Industrial Park. That's, um, probably for about fifteen years now. Um, in August, that lease will be, lease purchase agreement is up, and Spectrum would like to exercise their option to purchase the building from the city, um, under the terms of that lease agreement. So, basically, the lease payments that they've made up until now have covered the cost of the building, so the buyout on the lease is a thousand dollars. So, they would like to exercise their option. This ordinance, um, if introduced tonight, would allow for the sale of that property to them.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
Uh, just for introduction.
That's all we need, just introduction, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't have to second it.
Resolution 2018 dash 26, Administration of the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act. Resolution 2018-26, Administration of the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act. Greg?
Yes. In front of you this evening, we've got Resolution 2018-26. Basically, what that resolution does, it formalizes what we've been doing for quite some time now with Morrison County Soil and Water Conservation District. They run through all of the wetland delineation and, and such, as well as the TEP Board, the wetland mitigations and stuff. So tonight, we're asking you to approve the 2018-26 to formalize that, that relationship. We've got a good working relationship with Morrison County Soil and Water Conservation District, and so we look to continue to do that. There is no cost to the city, and like I said, they've been doing that for a number of years already, and it's been working good for us.
What's the wish of the council?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, seconded by Councilmember Conoffla. Resolution, roll call, please.
Gushak?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Are there any reports?
I have, just briefly, John and I, was that last week or the week before? When we went saw Gazilka. We went down to the, can't remember, we've been running around so many things, but we went down to the State Senate Building to lobby on behalf of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and our community regarding wastewater and all that's going on down at the legislature. And then also, yesterday, we were at the Initiative Foundation for Homeless meeting. There was a bunch of people there always to share a meal. Some good information hearing, unfortunately, about all the issues with homeless in Morrison County and the amount in our community, and lack of housing and food. And so I think it was a good kickoff for the discussion and to see what direction we could possibly go to remedy some of those situations. That's all I have.
Any announcements?
There's a meeting for Camp Ripley Veteran State Trail, Thursday, 6 o'clock at Cabin Fever, if you're interested.
Anyone else?
I had one, I, I'll be heading back, it was the week before that we were down in St. Paul, so it doesn't feel like every week that I'm going. But I'm heading back again to testify, this time it's on, on the issue of childcare. I think Mayor pointed out to me today that Senator Gazilka had posted a video on Facebook talking about the issue. It's getting, drawing a lot more attention. There's a couple legislative bills that are, that are in session right now that can help support and provide some funding for this issue. Just after my meeting with the providers and the other people in the industry on this, it's becoming very clear that it's not only finances, it's, it's regulations that are, that are holding some of these things back, or the pressure that, that these providers are facing to meet those, as well as try to stay, you know, stay up to date with their, their ratings, too, and the, for the parent wear system, the, these, the rating system that they, they created to help get scholarship money for the kids to attend there. It really shows quality in the providers, but there's now a disconnect in, in proving that your quality provider can generate more, more kids to your facility, but the need here is so great that it doesn't matter anymore for the providers, that they're, they don't have an interest, or it doesn't meet, you know, they, they know they're, they know they meet these, these ratings, and it isn't going to impact their bottom line in terms of how many kids are going to get sent there, because our, our supply and demand are so out of whack at this point. So it's, it's, it's going to be a good opportunity that. I'm glad that I was, I was asked to, to share this message on, on behalf of our, our community and the, and those that are feeling the impact that that has. So, but I did get word that one of our, one of our providers in town will be actually getting, or has in the process now, it's under review, a childcare center. So that is going to add a significant number of spots, so helping the need. However, that's offset by, in my provider meeting, knowing that two family providers are going to be closing their doors likely this summer. One, one has a firm date, and the other is, doesn't know when it's going to be, but it's probably going to be this year, as their kids have now aged to the school age. So they're going to, they don't have a need to, or desire to continue that anymore, so.
The day of caring is Wednesday, May 9. So those that are driving, the general public, keep an eye out in the morning of Wednesday, May 9. A lot of kids walking around, a lot of adult teams going from house to house, helping out various elderly and those that are disabled. So please keep an eye out, drive safe, and if you want to volunteer, I know there's still spots available to, to help volunteer.